Fran Avon, 136 Short Road. I just wanted to more ask if there was the research done and especially with banning medical, has there actually been a public nuisance that has been documented by the medical in the community here before the shops opened up since it's been around for fifteen years in the state of Washington? Has that been documented yet?
Staff, did you hear any issues or come to us? Yeah, I know. It would be better directed at the police department.
Yeah, I was just wondering, a hundred and four page research. I mean, James, I know there's a lot of it. Without, obviously, so many people here in the community and not one person actually stating when a public nuisance happened, it's hard to think that there should be an outright ban. In addition, I want to speak directly to the document, to its trade, which has a lot of whereas fact based statements primarily around the federal government is going to come and punish the city of Pacific, punish good, hardworking city employees. Washington DC is all federal land. It is medically legal there. They have shops open there. The federal government is not going to come in and prosecute city employees. They have given the green light to not only recreational but to medical. It's now in thirty states. So I think that trying to go against the voters multiple times for the city is not doing the will of voters. So, Fran, thank you.
Thank you for your... Is it clear you're a yes? Yeah. Any questions for the planning commission?
Called three times. I think you have to call for speakers three times to conclude the public hearing.
Anybody else? Anybody in the hallway?
Yeah. Okay, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. I appreciate all of you coming and giving us our input tonight. I mean, it's a wonderful evening out there and here we are in here discussing a really important topic for their city.
Before everybody goes, can I, could like, you know, there are a lot of people that didn't stand up and talk, but this is a straw poll. Who's for recreational, not medical? Who's for recreational? For what? Recreation sales and production of recreational marijuana in the city of Pacific?
Can you separate those? Yeah, in to DC.
Really?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Same question for the other one.
Okay, so who's for production of marijuana and cannabis in the city of Pacific? No, recreational, just recreational.
Nobody'd ever even know it. He's in a building.
I don't, I'm just asking, I just, you know, and who's against it? Okay, so then, how about sales of recreational marijuana? Who's for sales of recreational marijuana? And who's against it? Okay? Pretty split?
Yeah.
Fifty fifty? What about medical sales? Medical sales? What about, what about?
Four.
Make it legal, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Legalize medical...
It already is, isn't it?
Well, I mean, we're wrestling with that, right? It's legal since ninety-eight, but I'm...
But as of today, there are stores open and everything's been going along fine.
But that's not our choice. That's not where we're at. You're right. It's, they're open now, but we have the choice in a day today or in a month to decide whether they're legal or not in our city.
Do you recommend this in the city of Pacific or not in general?
Who's for...
Yes, we are.
Right. Yeah. And then, so you're for medical marijuana sales and who's not? Who's against marijuana? Medical marijuana? You can see it's, you know, it's pretty, it's still pretty well split, you know.
Pretty well split? Open, open, four, raise your hand, let's yell. Are you clear, open the meeting to a vote and what qualifications are there for voting? May I ask the board?
We're just, we're just, you know, a lot of people didn't speak tonight. We're trying to get just a small poll of, you know, where everybody's at. And I think we, I saw a lot of hands up for medical marijuana, you know, and not as many for against it. So, that's what I got out of that. The for and against legal, I saw it was pretty, pretty split, so...
Are you speaking the opinion of those who live in the city or are you speaking the opinions of everybody?
We're just taking a small poll. They cared enough to come tonight.
Yeah, we didn't have to do that. I just thought it might be interesting to see the hands go up, you know, see who was for and who was against.
I wish there had been more people to speak. You know, I mean, you know, let's keep your opinion. That's what I'm trying to figure out, you know, what's the, what's the will of the people here? That's what we're trying to do.
And we've been, we've been dealing with this for well over a year and this is the biggest group we've had with everything game public here for three years.
This whole article there, this whole, you know, issue has just dominated the planning commission's agenda for a year. And it's like, okay, let's make some resolutions here and send them to the city council and get some, get some action, you know, get what we want.
Final determination.
Yeah. Your input tonight is very valuable to us and we appreciate, you know, all of you coming in on a nice evening like this and speaking your mind. That is very much appreciated.
Is the mic, is the mic still open?
We're gonna have dialogue. It's just working. Somebody says it's pretty evenly split.
Yeah, well, I didn't read more into it. You're just reading more into it. I didn't even have to ask you guys. I just, it was a comment I made. I didn't count hands or anything like that. I made an observation. I made an observation.
As public officials be that flippant and say, oh, it looks like pretty evenly split.
And I'm all of you saying that.
Here we go. Hammer is gonna go down.
All right, guys, that's enough.
That is not a no thing.
John Blackwell, right here.
And I want you to be aware that we're all volunteers here. We're not city council. We are planning commission. We're all volunteers. We all live in the city and we care very much about this city. And we're doing our best as volunteers to, to support the will of the people. And that's why we're, that's why you're here tonight. And I appreciate your input.
Appreciate you, man.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chair, because there are other items on the agenda, you will take public comment on those items too?
The agenda tonight was this, was strictly...
Well, it says discussion and recommendations.
And that's, you're welcome to stay, but we're gonna, now we're gonna have a discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for helping us out. I had no idea there was a list going on. Okay, so, where do we end?
Number four, five.
With the chair...
Five.
We've got the four, uh, we've got the two, we've got the side if we wanna have it glued on or modify it or...
Microphone.
Well, they changed it. You know, I haven't really seen the latest, the latest, so...
Can you use the microphone, please?
Can you scoot the mic a little closer? Thank you.
We have the opportunity to have a few more words from our city attorney and my colleagues that have the other city involved in this discussion right now. At this point in time as well, but you're under no obligation to apply any recommendations today. If you do, that's very much in your support.
Well, I, from my understanding, was there was kind of a time constraint because of the moratorium? Was that it?
The moratorium has been extended. I mean, we had an interim moratorium. That's six months.
Six months. Okay, so we have additional six months to...
Well, there's also a little handout that was given to you at the back of the package.
Oh, yeah.
That gives you a time frame and it goes through everything that's happened so far and also gives you some predictive events. So that tells you a little bit where we are.
Okay, I see, yeah, the last thing on here, seven twenty-eight fourteen, was the city council extends the moratorium. So we're, we're okay with that? I mean, being able to extend it again? Is we're in the process of working on it or...
Well, normally you don't wanna have a rolling moratorium, but there are so many cities that have that right now because of this problem. I don't think we're gonna let any problems with that. I think it's more introducing that what you're seeing.
Right. One of the last gentlemen that spoke, you know, mentioned that federal government, you know, federal, you know, illegal federally with the state, you know, with the medical marijuana.
You know, I kind of agree with it that I feel like, you know, the medical seems to be kind of under the radar and I don't really see a lot of, a lot of problems with the state's musty medical, you know, federal. I know it's, it's a free brawl out there, you know, there definitely is need to be some ordinances. And I wish the legislature, I wish state legislator would start getting control of the medical, but, you know, I know you're, you got a ban here, you know, you're changing it because of federal. And, you know, I just wonder really, are we really under a big risk for, if the medical continues as it is, status quo?
Well, I can tell you, if you want more information about this, on my website, I gave you all of my business cards. And on my website, there's a long article that I wrote and it also gives in great detail about the letter that the federal government wrote August of last year. And basically what they said in that memo was that all US attorneys should determine whether or not there is sufficiently robust regulatory enforcement system on paper and in practice to identify the federal government identifies enforcement priorities with regard to marijuana. And if there is, then the federal government is basically gonna lay off. And here are their enforcement priorities. Prevention of the distribution of marijuana to minors. Preventing the revenue from the sale of marijuana from going to criminal enterprises, gangs and cartels. Preventing the diversion of marijuana from state where it's legal under state law in some form to other states. Preventing state authorized marijuana activities from being used as a cover or pretext for trafficking of other illegal drugs or other illegal activities. Preventing violence in the use of firearms in the cultivation and distribution of marijuana. Preventing drug driving and the exacerbation of other adverse public health consequences associated with marijuana use. Preventing the growing of marijuana on public land and the intended public safety and environmental dangers posed by marijuana production on public land. Preventing marijuana possession or use by state property. And the Department of Justice warned in that letter that if state enforcement efforts are not sufficiently robust to protect against the harms set forth above, the federal government may seek to challenge the regulatory system itself in addition to continuing to bring into individual enforcement actions, including criminal prosecutions focused on these harms. Right now, the city of Pacific has absolutely no regulation that addresses these federal enforcement priorities. There's no state law that addresses these federal enforcement priorities. So if you don't ban medical marijuana, you are at risk of having the federal government challenge your current system which is not existing. And with regards to any prosecution, when I wrote this memo, was the last time I was reviewing it, this was May fifteenth this year, there was a arrest by the federal government of medical marijuana growers in Stevens County. And according to that news article out of the bus, they, law treaty, justice department officials will refrain from prosecutions of states that have legalized some forms of marijuana, providing those operations are not involved in any of the HP activities such as selling to minors while always subject to arrest. They want to keep violence and guns out of marijuana operations and keep them off federal lands. These people that were arrested were just marijuana growers and the reason why they said they busted them was because they actually had guns. And they were just growing their, their own pot, on their own land, way, way out in Stevens County in a rural area, but the federal government went after them. So to think that we should just allow medical marijuana here because we're living in some cool paradise and the federal government isn't gonna do anything, I think is really in your head insane. So I think you're hanging out there with regards to medical marijuana. I do recommend that you ban it and you ban all medical marijuana use. I understand that people use marijuana for medical purposes, but they can still obtain it through the recreational marijuana system if you decide to allow that. So I don't think there's any argument at all, keep medical marijuana.
Well, the way, the concern I have is the public perception of that we're legalizing the sale, you know, legal sale of marijuana, but not the medical, the medicinal, you know, I mean, that's just that precedent of saying, don't legalize it legally, recreationally, but we're not gonna let you use it for medicine, you know. And I understand where you're coming from and you sound under the legal obligation, you know, to advise it. I just, I'm concerned the public perception of that, you know, the voters said it's legal, the medical's already, to them, it's a non-issue. Medical's non-issue, it's already, it's already out there. So, you know, now we're allowing recreational, but for us to just come out and say, you know, yeah, okay, we can buy recreational marijuana, but if you can't use it for medicinal, you know, but I see, I know what you're saying, you can buy it recreationally.
Yeah, no one's saying you can't use it.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Could you speak to what site?
I have not seen it, but I...
It's Carol, C-A-R-O-L, Morris, M-O-R-R-I-N, Law, L-A-W dot com.
Thank you.
Okay, honey. We can, do you have any further questions? Carol?
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay, I did, I saw that. Okay, do we need to read it, can we read it now or... I guess, yeah, we just put it in the record or... Well, it's very short. Yeah. All right, huh? You wanna read it from here? Okay. There was one in our packet, there was a written letter from Bill and Ella Wakefield, four zero four, Fourth Avenue Southeast. We're unable to attend special meeting tonight, but would like to express our desire to ban all use of marijuana within the city of Pacific. This falls under the E... That's the, that's the...
Our agenda is to...
Right. Yeah, the fourth, the ban of marijuana. Thank you for taking our concern and its address. So that makes it, for my tally, that makes eight against and six for, to be medical. So again, pretty contentious issue, you know, it's really pretty split on that.
Do you want me to wave it?
Yeah, I guess if we don't have any more questions for you, thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
I do have one question. I noticed the medical marijuana one, why did we add personal growth? I know that the ordinance at one time was for retail, medical dispensary, but then now it's come back and it's added individual cultivation of marijuana, recreational marijuana.
Well, in the state law on medical marijuana, it allows individual cultivation and then it also allows collective garden. And what the Court of Appeals said, recent decisions, that in the lawsuit that was brought against the city of Kent, is that the entire law on medical marijuana basically doesn't provide what people think it says. It doesn't authorize individual cultivation or collective garden because in order to have the necessary credentials, registration and have the ability to search an affirmative dissent if you're caught, the person who's growing it or has a collective garden would have to say, I am a qualified patient under the definition. The governor vetoed all the definitions. Then they were put back in, but then there was a problem with regard to the registry that was vetoed. So the Court of Appeals said, well, how can you be a qualified patient and then say you have the credentials, you're in the registry, if the registry doesn't exist? So the Court of Appeals says, we have an inconsistent law here and it doesn't provide anyone with the authority to have a collective garden or individual cultivation. So since the time that the first ordinance came out, there could have been a change in that to recognize the case law. But that's really the problem. We just recently had a lawsuit, collective reading versus the city of Pacific, and I just handled that where we won on summary judgment on that argument that the Kent case says, you know, the problem is the state law, it's inconsistent. It gives people authority only if they're part of a registry, the registry doesn't give it. Therefore, there's no relation to collective garden or individual cultivation. I know it's confusing.
Yeah, well, the state needs to get off their butt.
I think the state needs to be here, the state needs to decide to bring medical within recreational purview if that's what they're gonna do. The other problem is in Colorado and now in Oregon, what they're going to do is, well, in Colorado, they have this, they have a law that allows cities and counties to opt out of allowing medical and recreational marijuana. And we don't have that here. And the incentive in Colorado is that you get part of the revenue. And we don't get that here. What other people need to do is start leaning on their legislators to say, look, if you're gonna force us to have recreational marijuana in our cities and we have to deal with the other secondary use paths, so like policing or whatever is gonna result of it, because we don't really know if it's a new use, but whatever we're gonna have to deal with, we wanna collect the revenue to be able to deal with it. You're getting all the revenue now, we have no incentive to do the opposite.
Yeah, there was, there was a city, it was over in Houston, Washington, it wasn't the Accra law, but it was one of the, one of the cities, a small city, and they basically said the same thing, they're banning recreational because there's no financial incentive, you know, and until there is, they're not gonna allow it.
Can we have an option?
Options to what?
Do you have that, Rachel?
You have the option to do that, but, you know, as you need to consider, there's the issue of whether or not you're gonna sue them or not. And when Abby's already been sued, another city has been sued, in those lawsuits, the attorney general has intervened. Because the attorney general wrote an opinion that says that cities have the authority to ban recreational marijuana, that they're not preemptive. So he's entering into those lawsuits to deal with that argument. So we don't really know how it's gonna come out, but we do know that it could be expensive for a city that's sued having to suspend their ban.
Yes, it's, yeah, it's very unfortunate that they were put in a position like this without, and we, you know, we, I mean, you think about that money that we've already spent, the city of Pacific's already spent on this issue, I mean, literally years and the time, and then there's businesses that want, there's other items on the agenda that have been tabled because we've been dealing with this for so long.
And I do wanna point out too, someone mentioned this and it is still an option, you tend to consider allowing recreational marijuana and then if the impact was such that you feel that it is too much of a strain on the city for whatever reason, it causes a nuisance or whatever, that doesn't mean that you can't ban it in the future. As an example, cities allowed billboards and then they decided they were ugly and everybody hated them. So then they banned billboards, but they didn't ban them the next day. What they did was they said, well, we're going to allow the people who took up billboards and spent money on those billboards to amortize their investment. So they came up with a schedule based on the value of the billboard, put that in the code, you gotta get rid of your billboard in five years after that happens and, you know, or depending on the cost of your billboard, you can amortize it for many years. So it's not like if you decide to allow recreational marijuana, that you've done something that is totally irreversible.
Were there lawsuits on that?
On the billboard stuff? Yes.
I thought there was.
You have to understand, no matter what you do, you get a lot.
Right, so there we go.
Yes, you know, I used to work for the city of Seattle and there was a building where there was a bell at the top of the city building and then there was a guy who sued him, he gets the bell on the bottom on the ground floor. And when it was installed on the ground floor, he sued him, he gets the bell, he's like, you know, well, put me in range.
I just feel we're, you know, in a position, this city is, we're kind of on weak legs right now, just financially the way we are, and so if somebody's looking for an opportunity to definitely get a great trial, you know, the city to experiment with it, to sue us to try to get a, to get something in here, just because of our position.
And there are many cities like Pacific. There are, there are a lot of cities that just don't have the money and they're all facing the same decision that you're facing.
We do have a question.
Well, you know, the interim zoning ordinance right now for the next week, I don't know. Like, we can't just keep upping it over and over again because somebody's been challenged on that basis.
I do have a question. As far as they know, there's very few licenses, like, you should...
Thank you.
There've been very few licenses that are issued for processing and my understanding is that the one company that made it into the pool for retail was number thirty-four, there's only seventeen slots in Pierce County. So they didn't make that slot. So what's, what is the potential pool we're talking about? Do you, do you, Carol, think that perhaps they will open it up again so that more people go to those businesses? Or are we talking about a potential of maybe two or, two or three processors and at this point, by no retail?
I think we don't know what's gonna happen. We absolutely don't know what's gonna happen. What I heard on the radio the other day, they were interviewing, it was on NPR, they were interviewing a person who had submitted an application for retail store and he thought that was very unfortunate that the state has only used a lottery system. Because he said what should have happened instead was that people who had experience in similar businesses should have gotten first dibs at these slots because now we have people, we have no experience in the business whatsoever who might get a slot, yet they won't have the business to know how or be able, or have the funding to be able to open. And so they may get the opportunity to, and they'll fail at it, whereas someone else might be successful. So they may change their whole way of doing it. You know, the, the whole idea of using a lottery, I think also is kind of corny because we still don't have the impact of these uses to grasp in any way. The CBA, the environmental analysis that was done by the state, I think was very, very abbreviated. They did a study that was only on the cultivation issue and not really on the other types of issues. The state is taking in license applications without these checklists, so we have no idea what the impacts on the ground here in our cities will be. You don't know if there's enough water for these uses or traffic impacts, we just don't know what those will be. And so it won't really, you won't get a picture, a snapshot of what that would be until they come to the city and, you know, actually make an application here or submit a building for an entire business, license application. That's when we'll find out. I know, you know, Eastern Washington, there are places where producers, yeah, producers, growers aren't gonna be able to locate even the, even the water, so they're gonna be trucking it over here, so...
What about, what about like the lottery system? If this makes sense, if it's legal, then, you know, lots make, states like us, the lottery is a little, there's this one regulation, lottery only, to me, that was, you know, a certain number of people can grow it and then...
To me, that was being known as certain number of people can grow it and therefore can price gouging and then there's the whole undercover marijuana stuff coming back. Like, because like this guy from the news in Vancouver, seller won't, won't buy from the producer then because they're gouging on the product.
Well, I think the lottery is only on retail. And the lottery was.
What about producer?
No, and I think the reason why they did that, that they also have a limit on how many they'll put per county, that they don't end up having a whole bunch of them in one place. So, there, there's not a lottery on producers.
Oh, on the retailer?
It's retail, oh, pardon me.
But there wasn't a limit, there wasn't a limit on producer?
Yes, yes.
Oh, producer. Well, that's the thing, I mean, there's a limit on how many producers.
Yeah, they may raise that depending on how many fail or whatever happens. Well, they don't reach that much?
Well, they already cut them back. They took them from thirty thousand square foot to twenty thousand square foot. They tried to keep the price up. So even the producers that they have plotted already are only producing fifty percent of, or seventy percent of the same.
Hey, what are the numbers?
Okay.
Could, could you ask, uh, the attorney before she leaves if it's, if the planning commission can recommend very limited squash down hours of operation as part of a condition, the conditional use, were either to be allowed, like four hours a day or three days a week or?
So, did you hear that the question is, you know, limiting, uh, recreational, uh, store hours?
Yeah, um, if you look at the draft ordinance that you have there, um, the ordinance says, uh, addresses the initial use permit for, um, retail owners and processors. And it also says what areas they can locate. Council thought that processors and producers should be in the, um, industrial area. And it's shown there on that map in green. And then the commercial, uh, zone that's also in that area in between the two green spaces would be appropriate for retail. The other commercial zones in the city apparently are nearby sensitive uses that the state has determined, um, they can't issue a license for, you know, it's too close. So, anyway, um, that ordinance provides the profit for individual use permit. And you could recommend to the council that that be added as one of the, as a criteria for that.
My question is, if you limit somebody's business hours, cannot be challenged. If you, if you limit the operating hour, if you say you can only be open Monday, Wednesday, Friday from three P.M. to six P.M., you know, if we try to limit something like that, could that, could we be infringing on their rights or?
Well, as we said, anybody can sue you for anything. As far as whether or not they'd be successful, I, we'd have to just see because there, there hasn't been any cases on that. I would say that the city would probably be in a good position to be able to limit those hours. And that's because we're talking about a use that's basically illegal under federal law and highly regulated under state law. And what we're trying to do is address certain adverse secondary impacts. And that's the way the city has decided to try and address it. Um, we have to make, get some findings in there. I mean, if you're gonna recommend that to the council, you should decide to, um, come up with reasons why you think it's a good thing to limit it for those hours. Uh, I don't know what hours you'd be thinking of. But if you're thinking, you're already in the industrial area. It's not near, as far as I can see, I don't know what's surrounding there, but you're not near any residential structures or anything. So, if you think that it needs to be limited for hours, you'd have to wait until point one. Uh, if you thought it would probably impact the industrial uses nearby, I don't think it would, so.
You might limit itself too, you know, just in that, you know, they're not gonna stay open till midnight, you know, because maybe one person will come by at midnight.
Oh, yeah? Medical's open till eight, nine o'clock at night in the parking lot school on Saturday night.
Well, then the issue is whether or not there's an impact on surrounding land uses or if there's an impact on the street services. But you, you can't, I guess I should have, you know, commented when you made that question for, because you can't just limit something without the basis. You have to have a reason why you're saying that's why, that's, you know, why you see that.